What's your daughter's name? I don't just keep talking like this. Pretty soon it'll ever change. Cause your daughter's... You're glad?
Well, I'm...
Cause I...
It's like when I was six.
Okay, and I'm twenty-three of those. And I'm like, oh. Like, I'm probably older.
Frank? Let's sit here and drop some.
Yeah, well. Yes, yes.
What school are you guys from?
We just get the checks.
I know.
We get the Uber. Yeah.
Yeah, right. And I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you. Oh, he's a little closer.
Hello, I'm Mason Boy. I go to Jackson.
Yeah, that's a good call.
So, Mason's a crazy kid. Okay, perfect.
That's the mayor in the corner. He loves signing. He loves signing. He went outside now. Come sign out. Oh, I got those again. I know. My boy. Where is it?
Now they're gonna take off.
Sign it and dash out of here.
You guys?
There's some... There's some smarters.
Hi. Oh, Jesse. Oh, boy. Okay, what's that? That's great. I saw Kelly. I know, right? I'm not gonna do it all.
Thank you. Yeah, she's a good guy.
Yeah. Hi.
Perfectly. But I'll make the note.
She knows.
Well, I survived.
I... I don't care. Like, I'm so impressed. If he or her makes the dreams or... I want director stack.
I don't see you.
Do you want any? Oh, okay. I have a dress.
Guess I'm actually qualified.
Go ask her. I think, I think she should. But now I've been ready. Okay. Yeah. Oh. I just so... I'm not sure it's perfect. Oh. Some pet. And they don't... Fuck my keys. And, um... Decorations. I know that cat. Right there. So we're gonna put something on there. Yeah. So, okay.
Frank?
Yeah.
The problem? Is it not prosperity, but possibility?
It's like, I have a flyer.
Yeah, yeah. We're not gonna mention something like that. So what?
I'm a real estate agent.
Well, hello. Hey, I'm semi-retired. Not really. I'm still working hard.
It's like you're...
I was asking for a part.
Wait, you...
They're gone. No. I know it's time of that. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm like, kind of like... Definitely. Oh.
A little fun.
Yeah. I understand. I don't want to say. Yeah, no. I went to...
That's so beautiful.
So it's not mine.
You stay in the general? Yeah, yeah. Hopefully, probably be able to see one. I don't know. It's made on May.
Yeah, it was, uh... I went to... Oh. Story, tell the story.
Travel. He says that boroughs. Now.
Oh, we have one dimension. I'm going to eat.
I now call it order at the city council meeting of Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P. M. Uh, open prayer.
Mr. Frank? God of all creation, you are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
All right.
What is it to divide in the United States of America? And to do your God before which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then would you please call the...
Number Or.
Here.
Number Mathie.
Here.
Number Revolt.
Sir.
Number Fred.
Here.
Number Larry.
Here.
Number Lyric.
Here.
Number McLees.
Here.
Seven present.
Uh, may I please have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from March twenty-eighth and April twenty-fourth?
Fourth. Just fourth.
Oh, fourth, sorry. Uh, the March in quarter one finance reports and the updates chapters one oh three, one oh five, one thirty-seven, one forty-five, one forty-seven, seven oh one, seven oh nine, eleven twenty-seven, eleven thirty-three, seventeen oh seven, and part eleven, title five, as presented.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so. Each speaker will be granted five minutes. Please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address from the record. As a reminder, the rules are posted on the screen to the audience right, to the audience right. And violation of the rules are grounds for suspension and suspension of speaking rights.
Get this straight. First, you want my name and where I live?
Yes.
Nick Albrecht, four one zero zero Durwood Drive, Akron, Ohio, four four three three three. Good evening. I'm Nick Albrecht, president of Acme Fresh Market Stores, and I'm proud to represent the over a hundred associates that work at your Acme Fresh Market North Canton store. Acme is a local supermarket chain, family-owned. With me this evening are some associates from the North Canton store. North Canton Acme Store Director, Denny Hartman, and your North Canton Acme Head Cashier, Lisa Nichols. Lisa is also a resident of North Canton. And combined, they have over fifty-five years of service. They look very young. Our North Canton location opened in nineteen seventy-nine and has been proudly feeding the families of your community for forty-three years. In addition to feeding the families of North Canton for all those years, we've been paying our taxes. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one alone, we've paid over two hundred fifty thousand dollars with real estate, payroll, and income taxes. So over those forty-three years, our company has paid millions of dollars in taxes to the city of North Canton. I'm here to ask two things. The first, please do not sell the former Kmart property to Meyer, a Michigan-based retailer, so they can construct a big-box retail location in your town. My second ask, the city of Norton sees the opportunity, uh, North Canton, sees the opportunity to create a strong, long-term viable and diverse tax base, not a duplicative, fragile tax base, by creating an exciting, unique development or entertainment district that is a win-win for North Canton and existing businesses. If the city of North Canton enables Meyer to construct a store, it will be detrimental to Acme as well as many other retailers, including other local northeast Ohio retailers like Marks, Discount Drug Mart, a regional player Giant Eagle, C V S Rite Aid, and a new Aldi, all within three miles of this location. Acme will be hurt the most. We will suffer the largest loss of sales because of our proximity to the new Meyer. City governments, like the one here tonight, have the power to use their legislative and administrative actions to create environments that help businesses succeed and not to make businesses fail and close. Supermarkets rely on local population growth for the opportunity to attract new customers and generate sales because supermarket customers shop within three to five miles of their home. Over the last two census studies, twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, the population of North Canton grew by only three hundred and fifty-four people. Without population growth, there are no new customers to attract and no new sales to generate. The contemplated Meyer, I've been told by the city, is over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet in size, a big-box retail model. If we use a conservative estimate of twelve dollars a square foot of sales, this store will need to do one point eight million dollars a week. Without significant population growth, this one point eight million dollars is going to come from current North Canton retailers. And no current retailer in North Canton can afford to give up any business. There just aren't enough stomachs in the area. Recently, a local family-owned retailer, Fisher Foods, closed. The land we are talking about is vacant because Kmart went out of business. City of North Canton Council, Mayor, you have the opportunity here to stop this pattern of failure. Now, Acme Fresh Market is proud to feed the families of North Canton, and we do not take our weekly business for granted. Within the last five years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars improving our store, and we know we have to earn our customers' grocery business each and every week. So again, I ask you to do two things. Do not sell the land to Meyer. This additional retail space, without significant population growth, will result in another, in other retailers succumbing to the fate of Fisher Foods and Kmart. Second, the city already has a great idea, and it was stated by city administration, and I quote, "The city is not interested in a retail exposure bear." We are not pursuing this in order to facilitate retail. We are pursuing this in order to create substantial income tax revenues for the city by, you know, locating hundreds of office-salaried jobs at that location, end quote. You have a strong vision to increase and diversify your tax base by using this parcel or something other than retail, a transformational project. The strength and need for your vision hasn't changed due to COVID. Acme Fresh Market will welcome the opportunity to host public input groups of North Canton citizens and other stakeholders at our public community room in our North Canton store. And we would work with the city to help commission a study by city planning experts, local citizens and stakeholders, and development experts to help make a transformational plan possible. There is just too much for the city of North Canton and existing and potential new businesses to lose without comprehensive input and review on such an impactful piece of land. Together, the city of North Canton and all of us can make this project a win-win. Thank you very much. I would be happy to answer questions or talk further at this time or another time in the future.
Thank you. Mr. President? Just a moment. I would make a motion if Mr. Albrecht wishes to continue his remarks that he permitted some extra time.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Were you finished?
Yeah, I was, I was done. I apologize. Very good.
That's good.
I practiced.
Motion. Okay. I would have said.
Good evening. My name is Joe Albrecht. I live at seven oh eight Sunnyside Avenue, Akron, Ohio, four four three oh three. I'm the president of Albrecht Incorporated, and we own, uh, North Canton Plaza, fourteen seventy-four North Main Street, which is directly across the street from the former Kmart site. The site, we hope, that we believe will ultimately be developed as a pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use project with a vibrant mix of residential, small shop, retail, and office. Such a development would offer so much to the North Canton community. New, high-paying, salaried jobs with increased income taxes for the city. New places for new and exciting, uh, residents to live, and population growth for the city. New and exciting and convenient services for residents and visitors to enjoy. Such a development would bolster existing businesses. It would bring new customers, additional new investments, new life to the North Main Street corridor. This administration, this council, has the opportunity to create a development that the city can be proud of for generations. This administration, this council, has the opportunity to create a development that the city can be proud of for generations. This type of development may sound familiar. Indeed, it's largely your vision. The very reason the city of North Canton purchased the property in the first place, it was a bold vision, transformative, announced by the administration and certain members of council during the pandemic, trying times. That is strong leadership. Strong leadership creates an optimistic vision of the future, even when times are bleak, and then works hard to turn the vision into reality. Strong leadership creates an optimistic vision of the future, even when times are bleak, and then works hard to turn the vision into reality. And don't give up on your optimistic vision. Don't give up on the hard work. Selling to Meyer and constructing a new, big-box retail store is the easy way out. But think about it. It brings nothing new, nothing novel. It's just a simple repetition of the goods and services that are easily available throughout the community. And there's a big downside. Meyer will likely drive existing businesses out of business. It will take sales away from many other businesses, making it harder for those businesses to update their stores, to invest in their people. Failing businesses and businesses that are less successful eventually translate into failing commercial real estate. It's simple. A community can only support so many square feet of retail business space. At the North Main Street corridor, we are maxed out on square footage. If you'd like to know what happens to a retail corridor when there's too much retail square footage and not enough people, not enough salaried jobs to support businesses operating in that square footage, just drive around. I don't have to name the communities that are struggling with empty and derailed buildings or tell you where they are. I think you know. Don't give up on your grand and optimistic vision. Don't waste North Canton's opportunity. Don't give up on your grand and optimistic vision. Don't waste North Canton's opportunity. So what to do next? Next steps? Put the brakes on the Meyer project. Put the brakes on the Meyer project. Hold a series of meetings with constituents and stakeholders to gather input. This is a public project. Deserves public input. Involve the community. Build consensus. Commission a market study. What does an A-plus mixed-use retail project with residential and office look like on this site? Reach out to the commen, to the community, to the development community, not just statewide, but nationwide. Present them this great real estate and this great location, together with your market studies, and most importantly, the support you've built within your community. Why not build the best mixed-use project in northeast Ohio? Your city deserves it, and you're capable of providing it to them. You may feel like the die is cast, but it is not. You don't have to sell for more of the same. You can build something great for your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are some, those are tough. Tough to follow. Very good. Thank you. Uh, I'm a former councilman. My name is Dominic Fonte, nine six five Fair Oaks Avenue, southwest, northern Kent, Ohio. So since I only have five minutes, I'm gonna try to do a little change-up. So I'm here to talk about rental registration. So as a former, a former council member, what, seven and a half years? This has been a topic that came up many, many times. And I'm against it. And you're like, well, why are you against it? You know, it might be an opportunity to protect the, you know, the constituents, maybe... You know, there's lots of reasons why you might want to consider it. I believe it's the wrong time. I would shelve it. And since I don't have time to explain it all to you, I put a sixteen-minute video together. And so I'm gonna play it now. That's not acceptable. So what I'd like to do is pass around a sign-up sheet with your name and an email. Send it to you tomorrow. You can watch it in your own time. It'll give you an example of a little bit of history of, you know, I've been doing this thirty-four years, how nearly three thousand families go through the process, a lot of our apartments, commercial, residential. And I have a very good pulse of what the market's currently doing and has been doing. And some of this, some of us talked about it. And I also have some rental properties for the course of thirty years. So I understand landlord-tenant relationship. I understand the single-family, plus, as a council member for many years, I understand the business part. And Pat will tell you, when I came on board, the biggest thing I was working on was M S B, Main Street Business Development. One of the reasons why I got fired up is because Acme wanted to put larger LED poles up, but we didn't have the way, wherewithal to do that. Sound familiar, fellas? So I pushed to do this with Pat, and then we found out M S B, Main Street Business District, wasn't gonna work. So we had to do a total rewrite. It took three years to create the five corridors and to create all the language necessary to create an environment to do like what these gentlemen are talking about. And initially, we were talking about office, retail, big-paying jobs like Darrell floated in the paper. Well, COVID happened. Well, just like that, the whole paradigm shifts, uh, changed in housing. People work out of their houses now. They have different needs. The offices are gonna be empty in some cases because people don't need all those office spaces. And it's true. You know, there's not a lot of profit in grocery business. I worked in the grocery business eight years when I was younger. And, you know, I mean, the point is, it's very competitive business. So, you know, if I had a magic wand, it'd be great. Have something that accents something else instead of fights against the current. So that's a decision the seven of you have to decide. But I definitely feel the pain and suffering of being in the upper north. So I'd like to pass around my booklet, sign up for it. I'll send you the video. This will pertain to the history of what's happened in real estate and why I think it's a bad idea, and what the interest rates, what the market's doing, so you have a sense of what's happening in your backyard, because it's super important as, you know, advocates for the city, because we know there's a shortage of housing, don't we? There's five or six people for every single house. That's why everything's selling for a premium. So you young people, as you get to the point where you're now gonna be in the housing market or renting temporarily, you wanna have something in a safe, nice environment with walking trails, good schools, good fire, safety, EMS, and a lot of good things to do. So, um, moving forward, gentlemen, ladies, administration, I hope we can accommodate the goals of the city. We only have six miles. Let's leverage it. So don't step over a dollar to pick up a nickel.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more thing. I got a minute left.
No left.
So this weekend, we had Possibility Playground open up. So it was really cool. It's like a one point nine million dollar project. It is fabulous. So if you, it's on Seventh Street. If any of you aren't familiar with it, check it out. Well-planned out, great facility for the surrounding community, not just North Canton. And, um, it is unbelievable. So there's videos online that we shot the whole thing. Uh, the kids came piling in, and it was sweet. Mayor Wilder was on top of the monkey bars in a suit. And, uh, administration and everything, it was just a great, great event. So I just wanted to say, good work. So sign up for that, guys. And you guys, if you don't... You're doing it for school. I think you don't want. You're not asking. Put your... Pass it by.
Anyone else wanting to, uh, want to do House Counsel?
No, no. No, but I know I'm not...
Miriam Baughman, three two zero Weber Avenue, northeast North Canton. I wanted to answer some of the speakers today. I've lived in North Canton for over forty years, and I have shopped at all of the grocery stores, supermarkets. I believe that there are enough people in the area, because you have Greentown, you have all the places east and west, to support several grocery stores. The grocery stores just have to stay competitive so that they can get their customers. And I have some suggestions. I have shopped at Acme, and I've noticed over many years that Acme did away with the childcare area, which was great for shopping mothers and fathers, I know. And I shop, I hate, and take one fix to the grocery store. I noticed there's no drive-to-pharmacy. When I go to the doctor and I'm sick, the last thing I wanna do is get out of my car and walk into a store and get a prescription. I also noticed that you did away with the area where you had, uh, places to sit and drink coffee. And there was a lot of men's area, there are many groups that used to go there. And I noticed your meat department's very small compared to the green store. And I wanna speak to rental registration and inspection. I think that rental registration and inspection would be a great tool in our toolbox to keep property values up. When you have outer-area owners and outer-state owners that phone for rental, do they really care enough to maintain the property inside and out? I've driven past some rental properties, and some of them look pretty similar. Also, the, I looked, it's a hundred-dollar proposed per rental home for three years. That's very reasonable. Some years ago, I was on a committee to see if rental registration... Some years ago, I was on a committee to see if rental registration and inspection could be brought to North Canton, and one of our committee members was Ron Wooton, and he owns many properties in Canton and North Canton. And he was a big advocate of registration and inspection. He said that was really good for the owners of rentals because it assured the people that rented from him that the, the houses would be safe, and there would be somebody available. There was an, and he, he also said that if an owner did not want inspection, it's probably because he had something to hide. I have a couple of examples. Some years ago, there was a family in North Canton that rented a home, and their furnace went out, and they couldn't get ahold of the owner. I think the owner was out of state, and they went several days without heat because the owner couldn't be found. Also, a house across the street from me was empty for nearly two years, and there was a, like, these, both the man and the woman died, and the sisters didn't do anything about selling it. And one of the neighbors had a key and told me that the basement walls were black with mold, and they had a refrigerator in the basement, that the door was covered with black mold. The house eventually sold, and a person bought it, they fixed it up, and it's a rental. And I often wondered if that mold was remediated correctly, or if there's still mold in that house. But there was never an inspection, so who would know? Okay, I guess that's all I had to remember. I think if you would write down the pros for rental registration and inspection, and write down the cons, I think the pros would outweigh the cons.
Thank you.
Chuck Osborne, 307 Fairview Street, southeast North Canton, Ohio. Since Miriam Baumann has laid out the agenda, I will follow right along with her. I'll tackle the, uh, rental registration first. I hold hardly support it. I applaud Mr. Diorio. I think Mr. McLeister has, uh, been pushing for this. I don't know how strenuously, but we definitely need it in this town. I have a house on my street that's been purposely kept vacant for 10 years. I don't know if there's something in the tax laws that make this advantageous for this owner, but it has sat there for 10 years. It's right next door to Mrs. Wyler. I don't know where you stand on this rental registration and other improvements that we need in the neighborhood, but I'd like to see you be a little more vocal. On down the street, I had a former crack house there. It's now up for rent after being, I guess, remediated in, uh, I don't know why our permit department didn't force to have it demoed. It's on an undersized lot, and, uh, so I very hold hardly support the rental registration as does Mrs. Miriam Baumann. Uh, I think we can see Mr. Fonte has, uh, financial interests in this. Secondly, I'm going to go to the Meyer situation. I have been opposed to this since day one. When this all started, I said, when this is all said and done, if it moves ahead, like you, our, uh, expending millions of taxpayer dollars, and this is not land banking, as I have told you before, and some various emails, land banking is when a community takes over a property that is set vacant, is vastly behind in sales and the income tax, property tax, and generally, it can be acquired at no cost. You don't go out and speculate in high-cost commercial property. Now, I have attempted to pursue records. I think it's, uh, been made clear to me, the city initially pursued D-Bolt for that property, and that would have been nice. But you didn't make sure everything was in your favor before you laid out tax dollars. So now we're hanging out there with millions of dollars that we're paying interest on. And then, I guess, the city happened on Liberty Health Share, which turned out to be a can of worms, and they, the state has kind of put them in their place. So I don't know how Myers came onto the scene, but I see Myers now as a hail mary for the city because they're trying to get out from under all this debt. And I hold hardly concur with the Albrechts here. And I said a year ago, when this is all said and done, you're going to wind up for the grocery store on the west side of Main Street instead of the east side, because yes, they've laid it out in business numbers. There are only so many customers out there that need your product. So you're, you're sowing the seeds to undermine the whole area out there, because it is going to impact not only Acme, Marx, Drug Mart. All those businesses up there are going to be drained and ultimately go out of business. And then what are you going to be left with? A damn mess up there. I'm just reading the, uh, minutes from the CIC meeting in February, and I was dumbfounded to find out, I guess, the city is going to pay the cost to demo the former Kmart at about $300,000. This is crazy. This is crazy. People do not pay tax dollars to allow their city officials to speculate in the real estate market. And I would put a screeching halt to your plans here for Myers. And I don't know why Myers doesn't want to let things digest a little bit and see how the Fulton Avenue property pans out for them.
Thank you.
Do your Q.
Anyone else wishing to address council? Okay, now, moving on to old business. I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 20-2022.
For both of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries?
An ordinance amending the zoning act of the City of North Canton to reclassify the property zone as Outlet 417 in the City of North Canton, Stark County Parcel Number 10010198, from office building to general business fee.
This is the second reading of the rezone ordinance for the property on North Market at Washington Square. I indicated in a previous meeting, uh, my notes were correct, the size of the parcel is 5.8 acres. Planning Commission recommended the zone change. Issues with the neighbors have been addressed satisfactorily, and, uh, all who's put forward the third and final reading. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing done, then I'll make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance 20-22.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Moving on to ordinance 38-2022. Could I have a motion and a second to read by title only? Ordinance 38-2022.
For both of them.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? This is mine.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to enter into a performance agreement with McKinley Apple Group Limited for the construction of streets, stormwater management facilities, drainage improvements, and sewer improvements for the Sanctuary Phase V building.
Okay, this is my committee. This is the third reading. There is no new information from the last time. Um, do you have any comments, questions? I motion to move this forward.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 39-2022.
Go move.
For both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to accept a sidewalk performance bond in the amount of $54,225 between the city and McKinley Apple Group Limited, and accept the accompanying mortgage deed for city lot number 6952, thereby securing the bond for all necessary work required to complete sidewalks in the Sanctuary Phase V construction project.
Okay, this is also my committee. Again, no new information. This is the third reading. Comments, questions?
For both, move to adopt.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Moving on to new business. Could I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 40-2022?
For both of them.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Ben?
An ordinance establishing Chapter 193 Transient Occupancy Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, and thereby imposing a transient occupancy tax for the benefit of the City of North Canton, Ohio.
Stephanie?
Uh, so last week we talked about this, and this is a 3% tax that we are able to tax, um, hotels, motels, uh, in the city. And, uh, I think even if we go forward, we don't have a lot of hotels or motels right now, um, and some of them vary on the kind of, um, I guess rentals that they do, uh, but I think going forward, it's definitely something we're going to need, so I move to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? Um, I'm going to take my seat myself for this ordinance.
You have a motion to read ordinance 41-2022, please.
For both moves?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Ben?
An ordinance accepting a record plat of the Sanctuary Phase V located within the corporate limits of the City of North Canton.
So we've already voted on sidewalks. We already approved the sewers. The Planning Commission has already approved Sanctuary Plat 5, uh, the way it is laid out. We've gone through many iterations of the water and the drainage, and I believe that everything's in line to extend the sanctuary and finish with Phase V. I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance 41-2022 for a reading. For both seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Deputy Director of Administration.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out to the opening of Possibility Playground. Ben, do you have a little something that you want to, like, just 30 seconds or something?
Oh, look at that.
That was the ribbon cutting Saturday. It was a beautiful day. It's just a little progress video. Started in '21, a wide-open space. That's why we do it right there. That little girl's family thanked us. Actually, she has a place to play.
Sorry, I had that blaring in my ear.
I'll catch up with you. So again, the donor support brochures are around. Uh, we'll, we'll have them places if people are interested in donating to Possibility Playground. Our website has the, um, you know, information. It's just, um, you can just go to our North Canton City, uh, website, northcantonohio.gov/donate. And, uh, now we're on to other projects. You know, we got that open, and it's been great attendance all weekend, and packed with cars. We're going to move on to working with Akron Children's Hospital. We still have their $250,000 donation for a performing arts pavilion. So we're going to work with the designer and architect on getting that phase opened over there in the playground, and, uh, then we'll move on to, you know, all the other great projects we have coming. In the staffing world, I just wanted to note that we have a new hire starting. He'll start at the end of this week. He, his name is Michael Shuley, and he is our new design engineer. If Rob was here today, Rob would be announcing that. So it's great we're bringing on a design engineer. That's a new position for the city. We have, in the past, had to contract out design engineer work to a firm, so this should be a cost savings to us and just a benefit to have somebody in-house. And it also adds to our succession plan. He's a very bright, young, up, you know, up-and-coming engineer, and Rob's not going to be here forever, so he'll be able to have that great mentorship from the best city engineer in Stark County, and great for him, great for us, and it's part of our, you know, moving forward with our succession plans in every department. Um, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Administration.
Okay. A couple news items first. In regards to the, uh, natural gas aggregation, so of course, you've probably been getting, uh, some phone calls. We talked a little bit in the last meeting. The letters went out from, uh, from everybody, uh, explaining that Volunteer Energy had filed for bankruptcy. Dominion has sent out letters to constituents explaining that they're going to be with them, uh, for a little bit. Uh, I may have said at the last meeting that the, uh, existing customers of Volunteer were returned by the court to the default option in Ohio, which is to Dominion. And, um, as a result of that, residents will be staying with Dominion for two billing cycles. That's the law. Two billing cycles, uh, provided that the municipality starts another aggregation program. If we didn't do that, then they would stay there forever, or until some, until you went someplace else. But we are restarting a, uh, our aggregation program, and, you know, we prepared the RFP, went out to eligible suppliers, and I'll be meeting with, uh, our consultants this week to review the proposals, and then to, uh, pick one, uh, that will be representing us for our aggregation. And then, once that's done, um, letters will be sent out, you know, in May sometime, to residents of the city, letting them know, hey, we did pick another aggregator. You're going to have to stick with one you have for the moment, but this is what our rate will be, and you'll have the, uh, opportunity to, um, if you don't want that, to opt out of that program, if you want to stay where you're at, if you get a better rate. So I'll know a lot more this week when we meet to figure out what the rate's going to be, but we're hoping that with summer approaching and, you know, traditionally a down cycle for gas usage, natural gas usage, that the pricing might be a little bit soft, so we'll see. Also wanted to, uh, give council, uh, official notice that the new pavilion, uh, located on Orchard Avenue, adjacent to Price Park, is available.
Dogwood Park.
Sorry, uh, Dogwood Park, is available for rental. Uh, the rental rate is $65, and that will be effective May 1st. Also would like to, uh, let council know that for the month of March, there were 265 fire EMS calls. So always like to let you know that, how that is going, and the demand is still very high. Uh, in regards to, um, you know, some of the things that have been said tonight, uh, to say that I don't share their, the opinion expressed is, is an understatement. I would say that, um... I would say that, you know, competition comes, competition exists, whether or not it's on the same street. We used to have a place called Fry Hardware until Stanbos came. We used to have Stanbos until Home Depot and Lowe's came. So competition exists regardless of where it is at. If you're able to create the value that draws customers away, as Home Depot and Lowe's did, had an adverse effect on Stanbos and Fry. Unfortunately, I wish that the city leadership over the decades would have found a way to create a space for something that size to locate in North Canton rather than allow Jackson Township to create a vortex that just continues to draw, you know, more and more business. If there isn't, you know, one Italian restaurant on the street, there's eight. And it just seems to be the place to go to. So competition exists in the grocery business. We know that. And we know that, you know, Acme has locations around other Meyer stores. We know that Acme has locations around other Giant Eagle stores. And, you know, what we hope with competition is that it leads to innovation. It causes you to reinvent yourself. That innovation can lead to value, value for our residents, value in better pricing, more services, more goods. And, you know, without it, without competition, the status quo remains. I understand that you've come here to talk about, you know, protecting your financial investment, protecting your financial return. But that's not what we exist for. We are here to find opportunities for capital investment in this community. In this case, we think we have, and that it's substantial capital investment in this community. And that that is good for the schools. That is good for sharing the tax burden with everybody. We applaud that you pay your taxes. Every business should pay their taxes. I disagree with the assessment concerning post-COVID, the comments that you quote from myself. Although unnamed, existed a time in the March-April-May period of twenty-twenty when COVID was at its depths. Since that time, I believe that the landscape for the types of things that we initially looked at and initially had presented to other entities has largely changed. And that today, this represents a very good value to us with capital investment, not only for what they bring, but what they bring that comes along with that, other economic development interests. With that, I will conclude.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the students here for participating, the visitors for speaking, sharing your comments with myself and city council. Might just like to refer sometimes to our Dogwood Park dedication and grand opening that we had on Saturday. I want to thank our city administration and our city service teams in helping us to accomplish one of our major priorities coming out of the COVID pandemic, which was to complete the inclusive Possibility Playground at Dogwood Park. We set out to create a playground that offers a safe environment that with century-rich opportunities to improve resilience, increase self-esteem, and support emotional well-being for children of all abilities and development stages. It was my honor to be standing there and to take a long, hard look at that property up there, at what was, and what we have been able to accomplish with more opportunities for growth, exciting activities, and more fun to come. I especially want to thank Catherine Farina, Deputy Director of Administration and Development, in taking this project from idea to reality. Also, a thank you to the Masanik Lodge for donating land to contribute to the Dogwood Park area. And of course, our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Brian Hill and his staff, for being up there and getting this to completion. And of course, we had some special support from our community partners. They helped us bond as a community. Starbucks, Mary Ann Donuts Dairy Queen, and Kona Ice have always wanted to be a part of many of the activities that we put on here in North Canton. I also had the opportunity to be invited to Mission View Church. They had their grand opening on Sunday. Approximately six hundred visitors were there over two services. It's a beautiful building taken, that was once a Brown Mackey College that deteriorated into a massotherapy type of building, which we eventually closed as a police department. And now here it is, a beautiful structure for a reality of something better for our community. And of course, I want to thank that invitation there. And not to repeat what our city administrator, Mr. Giorio, said, again, I believe our focus is on building, building a future for North Canton. And we're making room for growth. And I still see that going forward with the Meyer project is one avenue for us to make room for growth. And not to neglect the other businesses that we have in our city. But if we could work together to help each other grow, then I am for that. But I am going forward with this project. And I think it's going to be a great growth opportunity for us. And I'd hate to miss this opportunity for us. God bless the Albright family. You've existed for a hundred and thirty years. That speaks resiliency. And here we are in another time of your, for your business and for another time for our community and going forward and continuing to provide the services and making the city the safest that it can be for all our businesses. Believe me, I understand your words and your sentiment and your concerns. But I still feel that going forward with this project, it will benefit our city in more ways than one and our local businesses also. So thank you very much again for sharing your thoughts and concerns with us as we go forward in creating and building a greater future for North Canton. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Finance?
Thank you. I wanted to let everybody know that Jim Burtovich was hired as Deputy Director of Finance. So he has completed his first week and he keeps coming back. He really is enthusiastic and is loving the job. So hopefully you'll have a chance to meet him as well. I just wanted to touch on just maybe a couple of things on the quarterly report. Just bring your attention to, we're looking at the income tax receipts. Because of the change in deadlines with the IRS, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty with COVID, those deadlines of filing were all kind of all over the place throughout the year. And so we are mirroring, I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen more, more in line with that. And that's just cash flow. You know, again, it's everything, we're still on target to receive what we projected to receive, but cash flow-wise, we're looking a little bit more normal than this year so far. And then the other thing I wanted to bring your attention to on the bank reconciliation, I did give you an update as far as income, or I'm sorry, interest rates. We've seen them climb from point twelve percent in January to point twenty in February to point three six. It's not a lot to get excited about, but we're pretty excited about it. And I know on the investment side, we get excited about it. On the borrowing side, we'll start to probably curve back on that in the next few months when we expect the Fed to continue increasing rates. So we're finding that that balance right now, we're about eighty-four percent invested. And then I also provided you the quarterly finance report. So if you had any questions about those, let me know. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ben?
First, Kevin keeps coming back as well. Second, shortly after you all took office, I had given you memo about the public communications activities me and any future staff to be undertaking. At this time, all of the initiatives have been implemented. So we're at the phase of sit and collect data and see if they're working or not. So more to come on that as I get better data on whether or not people are actually reading all the things we're putting out. And then, second, one of my big asks in the budget this year was for GIS equipment. I have been assured by our supplier that after two months of delays, it will finally arrive next week. So all of you that have requests for things to be mapped, Dave and Darryl, please wait. I will be ready shortly. Ben, that's my report?
Thank you, Ben. Jamie, for one?
Catherine, that was amazing on Saturday. I got a little choked up seeing some of those kids of varying abilities using that playground. And, you know, go out to, my thoughts go out to Dom and the other members of council who are here. I realize that a lot of us here at this table didn't get that started, but, you know, thank them and certainly thank you for the work you and everybody else in the administration did. So that was really the only thing that I had, other than I just wanted to address a couple of people that came in here and spoke today. Thank you to Dom and Miriam talking about rental registration. I appreciate both views, as opposite as they may be. I do appreciate you guys taking my time to talk this evening. And as far as the Albriks, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and speaking this evening. I mean, you guys, as you identified, you've been in this community longer than I've been alive. I will admit, when I got married about fourteen and a half, almost fifteen years ago, I had grown up going to Fisher's and my wife had gone to Acme. Well, we shop at Acme now. Continue to shop at Acme. I do occasionally find myself going and getting one of those smile cookies over at the other guys, but no. Point is this, I agree with what, with what Mr. Giorio, with the mayor have said. I'm a believer in competition. I don't believe that a new store on Meyer will prevent us from going to Acme. I can, or Main Street Meyer will not prevent us from going to Acme. We'll continue to go to Acme and I think we will find other reasons to go to Meyer. I think that this is a great opportunity for our community. And as much as I support them, they still certainly support you. I don't know if you'll see me on Thursday, but you'll probably see my wife there on Thursday getting our groceries. And it will be that way for a while. So thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you, Jamie. For two, David?
I too would like to thank Ms. Farina and everyone else that made Possibility Playground a reality. It is in Ward Two, but as was stated earlier, it's for all of the community and the surrounding residents. It's an asset to the community. I do also want to thank those that spoke tonight, for everybody that's in attendance tonight, the residences and the businesses. Hearing from you is a very important part of government. And thank you for that. As Chairperson of Personnel and Safety, I'd like to make a public announcement and turn that around a little bit and talk about the public as a whole and the residents and the safety that's required. We've all enjoyed the super warm weather this weekend. That brings more kids out. That brings more people playing. Please slow down, watch where you're going, watch the traffic. Keep in mind too, that when you cut your grass and you throw all those grass cuttings out into the street, that's a hazard for motorcycles and for bicycles. It makes the pavement very slippery. So in terms of safety, please be careful. Please enjoy this weather and let's all have a good summer.
Thank you, sir. For three, Stephanie?
Okay. I don't want to duplicate, but Catherine, it was so fabulous this weekend. Oh, my gosh. I came up, I parked, and I saw Patrick and I, you know, I was talking to him and he was, we were like, are people going to come? What, you know, we've announced it everywhere. People were talking about it. And boy, they really did come from all over. I mean, it wasn't just from that little vicinity. They came and they continued to come and they stayed. And I know I was posting on Instagram and linking it to Leadership Stark County and getting comments. And then there was birthday going down on downtown that was really cool. And then the library had stuff. And it was just one of those days, I think, you were really proud to be in Stark County. And I just got back from a trip across the country, taking my daughter to California. And I was posting, I was like, we may not have the ocean, but look at all that we have here. And people are friendly and they're courteous and respectful and they care, you know, a lot about their community. So that was just so great to see. And Catherine, remember when we were in your office and we were looking at the board and you were like, did you see this? And did you see this? And, I mean, it all came.
Came to life.
It came to life. So thank you. And thank you to her team. I mean, it was all of you that helped her do that. And to our Parks Department and the Altman's and I think the Rice's are doing grassy soon. But it was just, it was just amazing to see all those people there. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to the people that spoke. Dominic, Dominic, Miriam, it's great to see you back. Look great and pink. And thank you too, the Albriks, for speaking. I kind of feel like you have an amazing business and you have it up in Green and other locations. I mean, I really go to all three of them and pick and choose. And when you opened even the one, and I don't know if you managed that one as well, but the one over by Hills and Dales, just the newness and people talk about that and you've continued to do that. And I hope that, I think all the people will continue to go. They're loyal. We're loyal in North Canton. We believe in that. But what I hope is that maybe we'll use the other part and we're not going to go to Jackson. Nothing against that, of course. But maybe we can buy some of our materials or tools or some of the things that maybe you don't have. And then we'll get some of that revenue. But I truly believe that the competition is good for us to maybe keep some of our residents here in that regard, but that they will continue to come. And so, and thank you for all that you did through COVID and getting people their materials that they need for cooking food. And I know you do so much for our community as well and that doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Darryl?
Guess you skipped over me?
Oh, I'm sorry. For John.
Catherine, great job. It was a, you know, I think when I met with Pat briefly on Saturday, you said that was the biggest thing to happen in North Canton since the, over the Dogwood Park, or Dogwood Pool there. So there was quite a lot of people that thanked you. There was a whole team effort. I appreciate that. To our speakers today, great job. The Acme folks, thank you so much. I think it's going to be competition. Being in sales, if you don't have competition, you're going to be out of business. You've done some things that others haven't. You do some things up in Green that haven't seemed, it's a beautiful story. You have a beautiful story here in North Canton. And thank you so much for paying your taxes, being on time, employing a lot of North Canton employees. I really appreciate it. With the weather getting nice, I had a couple of calls about our gutter, or the sewer system, people putting their grass and leaves and stuff. And I think we, I called the street department. They were going to send them out. So thank you for that walk around there in the audience. I appreciate that. But the residents are happy. It's a safe city we live in and they really do appreciate it. So thank you so much, Chief of County. That's my report.
Thanks, John. Darryl?
Thank you.
Catherine, I'm going to echo my colleagues on council. I recognize that Saturday's event was the conclusion of many, many months of heavy lifting. It involved securing funds, securing donors, working through regulatory systems, acquiring property, improving designs, et cetera. And while the celebration lasted an hour or so, it really reflected a lot of work. And I want to congratulate you, I think, on behalf of council because it really was hard work. And I think everybody's pleased with the results. Nick and Joe, I want to welcome you to our council meeting tonight. As my colleagues on council know, I'm the long-winded one. I promise not to put you to sleep. But I think it's important to understand that our community is pretty tax-sensitive. We rely upon property tax in the city to drive a fire EMS, not exclusively, but for the large part. Income tax funds police and all other services. Those are critical elements as we look out over our long term. We came through COVID on the income tax side relatively intact. And we were attacked because we had people couldn't work from home. They had to show up for work. And so our numbers are pretty good. There's a little fluctuation there, but by and large, if you look at the data. And so it underscored as we looked forward into what we needed in the future. We need to be mindful that if we have another pandemic, do I want office jobs? Do I want some? do I want office jobs? Do I want something else where somebody has to come in at 1:00? It's a hard reality, but at the end of the day, we can't go out and easily raise taxes. A number of years ago, I'm just trying to think who was around, probably nobody, our former finance director, Alex Zumber, and I did a study of a little imaginary family that lived down on Lipton on the Southwest. We put them in one of the little bungalows, and we mapped out their income. And, you know, she was making 11 bucks an hour, and he was making 15. And, you know, we had a pretty good idea what their electric bill was, and their water, and all the other utilities. And he went to find them. They didn't have anything left over in here. We had a mayor who wanted to take us up from 1.5% to 2% at times. I said, Eric, we can't do it. We can't do it. They can't afford it. They literally couldn't buy a water heater. That's how tight this population is. And when you look at our, our, our population, the census says our median household income here is about 60 grand. But that's really driven by one of three, three neighborhoods on the east side of town. It's really a lot lower. How do I know it? Because I look at the dandelions in everybody's front yards. That's kind of my, my Scots indicator of economic health currently is. We know that we have to grow jobs and grow investment. I think, Nick, you said, you talked about stagnation and no growth. Here's what we know, is that this school district is built out. It's got nowhere to go. There's no place to grow with new investment. We have to redevelop. Okay? Now, you've raised a great question. Put the brakes on it. Rethink it. So I'm going to walk away from $30 million in new capital investment, 300 jobs. That's what we'll walk away from. Meyer, all the stuff around it, plus the other stuff that's going to come. What's the timeline on that? How do I replace that? How do I unpack it and make it work? It's easy to say, do it. It's harder to implement it, as we know from our experience and you know from your development experience. It's brutal. It's very problematic. You've got to flavor the night of some of our constituents and their feelings. We have finance matters that we have to be attentive to. I don't have the luxury, I literally don't, given my age, of waiting 15 years to develop this project. I don't. And I don't think the community has the patience for it. We're working very, very hard to come up with strategies for our school, for our municipality, to pour as much new capital, redeveloped dollars in this place as we can get. It's all about it. That's why we're going to tear it down. And that's why what's going to happen there is going to happen. I don't know how we, I don't know how we necessarily work through those complexities. But here's what I can tell you. This group that I sit with is growth-oriented. They're not gamblers, but they're willing to take a risk. They have clear objectives. They have sound advice. They've got great checklist. And when the time comes for you to do something, I'll bet you have their attention. We would welcome a partnership down the road. So never forget that. But again, as I come back to this notion of trying to unpack this, it's a lot more complicated in reality than it is to stand, sit here behind a mic at a council meeting. We're grateful for all you've done, grateful for your presence. Welcome your ideas. We're well along the way. So if you leave here with one thought, actually, I hope you leave me, too. First of all is, are we willing to cooperate in our best wishes? The second is this, is how the hell do we make lemonade from lemons? And I would challenge you to think about it. What is it we can do? We've got a brand-new zoning organs in place. We're willing to play with it. Actually, that's the wrong word. The word I like to use is experiment. And we're willing. We're willing to chase good ideas and run them down. And I think I can speak for everybody else. We have our word. That's it.
Thank you, Daryl. Christina?
So Nick and Joe, thanks for being here and for being Acme. I know everything that you guys do. I used to work in Acme, and you supported, I do fundraising, so you supported everything we did. So certainly understand how valuable the company is and how much you support the community's dream, and you appreciate that. And I'm kind of going to echo what Daryl said on accident, because I had my notes written down already. But whenever you said that you would be willing to host focus groups and citizens in your community room to talk about a transformational plan, I thought you were going to say for the Acme Plaza. And I was like, cool, that's, yeah, let's do that. So, you know, I just encourage you, yeah, like, let's do something there. There are great things there. But, you know, when there's a vacant space in that plaza, we're the ones who get blamed for that. We've got vacant property across the lane, across the street. We're being blamed for that. So like Daryl said, we're here, we'll support you. But I really thought that's where you were going. And I was like, oh, I want to hear more about this. But what can we do there? So thanks, guys. And then Catherine, holy moly, like superstar of the world. I just, I took my son to the Pacific Playground. My son is 15 years old on Saturday. And he said to me, well, he was only going, you know, for me. He's like, I'll go for you. And then he was all over everything. So clearly inclusive, like this is inclusive of everyone, including the mayor. But he said to me, Mom, maybe you can do something cool like this, since your park's rec chair. And I, sometime, he's like, because you had nothing to do with this one. And I was like, thanks. You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. It was the former council and the administration, but I just think it's a pivotal step in what can we do at the Civic Center? What can we do at Caplia Park? I just think you've laid the groundwork for what we can do going forward, and I'm so proud of you and your whole team. And Steve Shank, who was there on Saturday, still carrying stuff. Oh, dude, you never get a day off, like ever. Just, it's huge. It's huge for the community. So thank you. And that's it.
Hey, Christina, thank you for what the library did on Saturday, too. That was a great event you guys hosted up there and stuff. And thank you for riding that for us.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I'll hop on the ride there, too. I think that park, it's unreal. I mean, to see everybody being able to play together and to experience it, it did kind of, I mean, it was very touching. I mean, what my, my son said, something along those lines, when a 10-year-old realizes that, it really hits home hard. And he says, everybody could play here. I would have never thought that, going to a different park and seeing a nine, 10-year-old saying that. But it was, it was amazing. That's, there's nothing like that, folks. So congratulations, Parks Department, you, the administration, everybody. That was incredible. Thank you, Nick, Joe, Dominic, Miriam, Chuck, the Albrechts. I'm not a real big, big-box guy, you know? That's, that's not my thing. I'm a local guy. I'm going to continue to support local. I will. We cannot turn down a capital investment of that proportion. It's, not only is it late in the game, but it is, it is a huge benefit to our schools, gigantic, to our, our income tax base, to everything. We're not in a position to turn down up to $30 million in capital improvement. It's just, it's, it's not in cards. But you have a very loyal community here. There's, if you look up and down Main Street, there are small businesses everywhere. And that's, that's our type of prebowl in North Canton. We, we support small businesses, so I hope that that trend continues. Yeah, Christina, the library event was fantastic. That's, I wish that would come around like more often, because then by the time I realize, I think you have like these monitors and all this stuff I can recycle, it's too late. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion and a second to enter into executive session for the purpose of reviewing a collective bargaining agreement permitted by ORC 121-22G4.
Move, move into executive session. Second.
All in favor?
We'll call the.
Oh, yeah. Ben, would you take the role?
Member McLeister?
Yes, sir.
Member Matheny?
Yes.
Member Wyer?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Murray?
Yes.
Member Vol?
Yes.
Member Sora?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect. Council would like the Director of Administration, the Deputy Director of Administration, the Director of Finance, the Director of Legislative Affairs, and the Mayor to join the executive session.
And Director of Law.
And the Director of Law. At this time, we are up for it.
Hey, real quick, we should get a picture with these guys, because I think all their classmates left at the.